Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special board meeting on September seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Start by saying the pledge of allegiance for those who wish to participate. Would you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
So yeah, I believe everybody is, all members of the board are present except for Triste Deardoo, who I would expect to see shortly. We basically have two items on the agenda tonight. Presentation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two student equity plan and a report on the diversity and inclusion survey. We're going to switch the two around and start with the diversity and inclusion. Excuse me. We're gonna start with Mr. Howard Deutsch, who's our consultant to discuss the results of the climate survey. And, Mr. Deutsch, I'd just introduce you. And have you tell us a little bit about yourself, where are you from?
Sure.
Helen has wanted to share a few thoughts first.
Just before we get started, for the record anyway. As you know, when I came to work here on April first, we were in the midst of lots of things. And I drew the conclusion that we needed to have a climate survey. I think there had already been some discussion about that. And there was some concern among employees as to whether or not we should have it whether or not they would participate because they didn't feel that it would be anonymous and many other things. And we decided it was a thing we needed to do and the board agreed. And so we hired Howard Dirch to conduct the survey for us. He is out of New Jersey. He was referred to me from some of my CEO colleagues on the East Coast, so I went as far away as I could to find somebody I didn't know and nobody here knew, but it's kind of a joke. But anyway, he has been working with us since April on the survey. And it took us a while. We ran right into graduation with the survey. So we could not make the presentation of the results because at summer and people were gone. And so this was the earliest time that we could do that. And I think we had, he'll tell you that he thinks the participation is low based on other organizations, but for community colleges, it was pretty, pretty high. And we're pretty impressed with the way people participated. They kind of laid their souls bare, really said what they thought. That was what we wanted people to do, just so they felt safe in sharing how they feel and how an individual feels is how that person feels. And so we have this information. And the idea is that we will share it. We promised that we would. We promised people that it would be anonymous and not traceable back to them. And I think that was one of the reasons for the high level of participation and also for the huge number of comments we received in that regard to support how people rated each one of those elements. And so we will have this presentation for you tonight. We had one earlier and it was a discussion with the senior leadership team because we have taken very seriously the comments in the report. And we're working ourselves a plan to help improve our relationships with the employees because we know how critical that is. And when people think of their jobs, much of the time, they think about the leaders. And that's where the trust has to develop first, and we're very much aware of that. So we're really focused on improving the relationships. So the employees will have an opportunity tomorrow and Thursday to hear this same report. And we're offering them on campus and at the SHOT and Wake campuses so that everybody has an opportunity to participate. And then on October first and second, we're having focus group presentations where people will be able to interact with facilitators, will get to hear their voices and what they think. And one of the interesting things for us will be if there's been any change since, since May because some things have happened since then. And we get to really see if there's been any improvement in the few months since that time. And so Mr. Dirch is here today to share the results with you. And I now turn things over to him.
Thank you.
Before you start, Howard, look, just one or a couple of things. The, the meetings tomorrow is gonna be three sessions tomorrow.
Three, the next day.
Three sessions the following day. So hopefully, hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for those, for those meetings.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to be here. What I'd like to do, there are over sixty slides. If I cover every one in detail, we're not gonna do it in the time allotted. So what I'm supposed to do is cover some in more detail, some of them quickly. You all have copies of this.
Triste Miller, can I make a motion to adjourn at or before seven PM? That was what was scheduled.
Okay.
I think we have to stick with that. Anyone a second?
Is there a second? Motion to adjourn at seven o'clock.
At or before seven.
I'm neutral.
Can I, can I ask before I second a motion, is there a particular reason why?
Well, that's what we've advertised.
Okay.
And so I didn't know we needed a motion for it, but we do need to end at seven because we've advertised to the public that we would.
Okay, I'll say that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can I add something to that? I'm here. If after that, any individuals want to talk a little bit longer, just a small group off the record or something. If I can answer questions that come up, it'd be my pleasure as late as you can want till you've had enough of me. So, yeah, that won't be an issue, so. Okay.
Is that the discretion of the chair?
Deleted.
Or have not done by a certain time, we take a break for dinner. All of the favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So as I said, I think the way to get through it all could also really accommodate your questions, which I think is at least as important as covering the material. Because again, some of you have had the opportunity to read it. You all have copies. You can read it afterward. I'm not gonna verbatim read it all to you. That's wasting your time. I wanna cover some key issues. And then if you have a couple of really hot issues along the way, bring them up. But other than that, I think it may be more productive if we allocate some time near the end to get the discussion and questions out, if that works for you. But if there's something, you know, a real burning issue, please, please stop it. Only, I put my bio up for one reason. What's involved, I've been an adjunct faculty member for a number of years, albeit it was a while back at Setonville University in New Jersey. So I've got a sense of what goes on day to day on a college campus. Albeit, I, I did it nights, not during the day, but at least I've got some sensitivity, I'd like to think, and some understanding of. And actually, even though I was in adjunct, I was on some committees as well. So enough of that. What were the objectives again? I'm not gonna read anything to most of it directly. But the whole idea was there was a sense that things were not working as well as they might. And there's some need to find out what's really going on. How do people feel, but get that data anonymously so people can open up. We had about thirty percent response. Typical for colleges, lower for any other kind of organization, based on twenty years of experience doing this type of thing. It's what it is. But from those thirty percent, some of them, they said in their comments, they spent two hours even doing this. Five hundred and eighty-eight pages of comments, that's a lot. So we learned a lot. People were real honest and open. And I think we have some good results that accurately say what's going on on campus. So we wanted to, you know, part of this is also, you wanna establish a baseline of information so that let's say in a year or so, you can go back and do another similar assessment to see is progress really happening, are people sensing and feeling it? Because frankly, we found, and it's not unique to this place at all, there's a lot of cynicism. People don't believe you're gonna do anything as a result, and that's part of the reason the low response rate. So it's showing people, hey, we really took this seriously. The worst thing about a survey is asking people their opinions and then doing nothing with it. Sends a terrible, it's worse than not doing a survey at all. So the onus is really on leadership to do something as a result of this, something meaningful. So you got that baseline. And it's also to send a signal hopefully to people, leadership cares, wanna hear or want to do something about it. Today specifically, tomorrow and the day after, is to share the results of the survey, to give people an opportunity to ask some questions and to let people know there will be a process to deal with these issues that makes sense. So it's up to leadership to sort through it all and say, this makes sense, this does. But also, I, I think it's critical, and I'll say this again before we're done, to come to terms with here are the findings of the survey. Do you believe it or not? There needs to be, if you're gonna get meaningful results, there needs to be some level of consensus between the leadership team, current and future with the new president coming on board, which is real critical, and the board, among other constituencies, that yes, there's the recognition that there are some issues that need to be dealt with, some with greater urgency than others, and that there's a willingness to look at it, set some priorities, and have a process in place to deal with it. And I'll cover some of those issues. Very quickly, the survey happened for three weeks in April, May. It was an online survey, English and Spanish, of the seven hundred and eleven responses out of almost twenty-three hundred employees that received the request to do it. With the exception of about maybe ten or twelve people, everyone did it in English, but there were ten or twelve that did it in Spanish. We had a rating scale of one to five. Sixty-four, there were sixty-seven questions. Sixty-four of them were statements where we asked people, do you agree? Somewhat agree, neutral, somewhat disagree, or totally disagree. And all of them are done in such a way that hopefully everybody, if they were positive about things, would say, I agree. There's no mix and match, you know, it's you want agrees to the extent possible. You never get a hundred percent there. So we'll give you the results based on that. There were three other questions, basically the answer was yes or no. We'll get into those as, as well. I just wanna do a shout out to Zee Reese. Very, it was a pleasure working with him and he had some good suggestions in the questions at the beginning. We designed the whole thing based on experience at some other colleges, but we added a, a small number of additional questions, tweaked a few, the wording on a few, and it certainly added a lot of value, so thank you, Zee. Possible reasons for the low response rate, and I know people are gonna be concerned. Again, very typical of other colleges, but we know from a lot of years of experience, reasons people don't, they don't believe it's anonymous. On camera, I will say, it was a hundred percent anonymous. We as the survey company have no way of figuring out who the people were. It's just, there's no way for us to do it. We could look at IP addresses, someone might say, and I'll tell you what, when you do it in an organization like this, there are countless people with the same IP address. You know, there's seventy-five people over here and twenty-seven over there. We don't know who they are. And if we did, which we don't, we said it's anonymous, so it would be unethical for us to tell you. So it is un, you know, it was anonymous. Where it may not be is some people started telling us about, well, two things happened. One is some people named names. That's good, leadership team can look at that, but that's not necessarily something you might wanna spread around. Probably very inappropriate. The other thing is some people start talking about themselves and their situation. You know, I'm, I'm a mother, I have two children of a following age, I've been here X years. Well, there's probably only one person with that profile. And if there's two or three, there may be three managers second guessing who it is. And there were quite a few of the comments had that type of thing. Others, they didn't mention a person's name, but they started saying the department head of XYZ department. So those are the things where I learned a lot. You know, leadership team got to see it, but maybe it needs to stop there. So there's cynicism. Some people are saying, why bother, based on experience, they're not gonna do anything in the survey. It's considerable there. Some employees might be very happy and say, you know, I'm happy, things are fine, I'm not gonna take the time to do it. And you had another group typically that they're totally disengaged, they show up for work grudgingly. They're not gonna do a survey, they're not gonna get on a committee, they're not gonna do anything. So somehow, there's some mix of this, and those were their reasons probably, we're not sure, okay? That's what happens. Concerns, fear about the survey not being anonymous, people told us they were concerned. So we, and that's, happens in every organization, as much as you say, we as an outsider say it. And I tell you, when you do surveys like this internally, usually the response rates are considerably even lower. Once you get an outsider, or at least some people will say, okay, I believe you. So the validity, here's what we know. We know that for thirty point one percent of people who did the survey, it's a hundred percent valid, no ifs, ands, buts about it. For everybody else, there's a high probability that it's probably on average mirroring the rest of the population. There're gonna be some real positive, some on the fence, some real negative, based on their own reality and experiences. We can't say for sure, but let's say every other person was totally positive and that's why they didn't do it. With thirty point one percent feeling the way this group felt, there's cause for taking action. Because it takes a lot less than thirty percent of people to feel what we saw here, to sink the ship, any ship, any organization. You know, a few people that are very negative, people that are experiencing difficulty coming to work every day because of who they report to or some other situations. And we found that in a number of the comments, not just a couple. It needs some attention. And again, each, each person's experiences, the feelings, their perceptions are their individual reality. And for some people, the reality is wonderful. We had many comments from people saying, I report to the most wonderful, effective, intelligent, open-minded, just terrific person. And others were absolutely on the other end of the spectrum and had trouble reading themselves at work every day. So you gotta sort through that. This organization and no other organization is a monolith where everybody wants standard culture. There's sort of, if you ask to define it, I probably can come up with a definition, explanation of the culture here. But it's really made up of a bunch of subcultures, depending on campus, department. And there's a lot of variation in that, who you report to and things like that. So it's sorting through all that data, the ratings, the comments, to get a good understanding of how people feel and what's their personal reality and whether they're motivated to come in and do their best or not. I put this up, I'm gonna let you read it on your own, you've got to read things. But these are the key issues that were dealt with in the survey. What's climate, its cultures, those kinds of things. What's diversity, what's equity, what's inclusion? Not everybody understands or has the same definition of these things, it's important. I, I don't wanna take your time reading it, but it's, it's that people get on the same page, some of these issues. In the survey, again, for those sixty-four questions with the rating scale, we've come up with, frankly, it's arbitrary, but it's sort of like the traffic light. What's relatively good ratings? And on that five-point scale, we're just saying, if you got four point two oh overall for a question, all people responding, that's reasonably good. If you get between three point eight, four point one nine, that's not as good, if you will. And again, this, this is just a, it's, it's a general way of looking at it. Once you get below that three point seven nine or below, it really, things need more attention. So here it is. We're gonna go through, there's sixty-four, I can't cover them all, we'll do nothing else. But I wanna give you the concept of what we're dealing with. Overall, all questions, all sixty-four, the over, for all participants, the overall rating came out to be three point five zero. Based on our experience at other colleges and other organizations, that number is at the low end. It's not the lowest, but it's, it's the lowest, the lowest quartile for sure. So there's some sense for need for urgency to start dealing with it. And so for each question, we've ranked from the highest rated down to the lowest rating in the sixty-four questions. They're in that rank order. Those other columns, those are percentages. What percent said, I agreed totally with this thing, or I somewhat agree, or I'm neutral, I somewhat disagree or disagree. And where you wanna be is really as many people as possible agreeing with something. You'll never get everybody to agree to anything. But as many, where these numbers here and here are high, you wanna try to, in whatever remedial things are done, is try to drive the numbers here earning people's trust and changing processes and doing all those things that can be done as a result of this. It turns out that several of the questions in the survey, half a dozen roughly, are questions that I would call more aspirational. Should we do this kind of training? Should we do that going forward? That could be positive. And those got some of the highest ratings. All the others, close to sixty, were more, tell me about how you feel about specific issues going on. Those were all lower rated than the so-called aspirational. These aspirational ones are good in that we understand how people feel, should we do more to make the changes? People largely saying yes, but they're also saying in it, yep, but we need some change. But, you know, another thing, reasonably good news, am committed to working for the college for the foreseeable future. And those are pretty high percentages. There's always someone out the door, for family reasons, time for retirement, on and on. Some people just wanna get a different job. So you, you'll never be a hundred percent on the agree column, okay? So, but you wanna come over as close as you can. An interesting and important one is right here. My direct manager, the person I report to, does not bully or abuse employees in the department. Sort of good news, overall rating, and seventy-three percent didn't fully agree. The reality is, you really wanna get that thing as close to a hundred percent as possible. If thirty percent almost said, I'm on the fence, I'm not so sure, or they're lower down there, that's not so good. If you, if you can't say, hey, my boss doesn't bully and, you know, it's comfortable and I'm comfortable going to work and all that. So some of these, it's not whether you're high up or lower down in the rating, but some of these are actually probably more important questions than others. It's up to leadership to figure out which ones are the most important. But what, what happens is if you seriously deal with all these things, by fixing some things, others automatically get better. People see the tone, leadership behaviors start to change. People see some things happening that are good, it changes the mindset. If, if I can, and I discussed it with the leadership team earlier today, I don't know how many of you, if any, have heard of the Hawthorne effect. But very quickly, Western Electric, the manufacturing arm years ago in the nineteen twenties at AT&T, Hawthorne was a plant near Chicago. And my predecessors, the industrial engineers that started that profession, went into that plant. And manufacturing was important. And they started looking at ways, how do you improve productivity and satisfaction of workers? And that was a very novel thing, never done before in history. And what they did is they improved the lighting. Productivity and happiness went up and satisfaction. They changed the color of the walls, they painted them. They kept doing, oh, they made it warmer, they made it colder, they did this, they did that. No matter what they did, things got better and better. Then they even reversed some of those things and they still got better. And you know what they found, bottom line, some of those things really helped? But when the employees felt that management was paying attention to them, trying to make life better, that hit the mark more than anything else. That's my message here. That ability to say, we really heard you. We can handle everything. There may be some reasons why we can't do certain things, but overall, we're gonna address as much as we can, we'll communicate more than we did in the past. If we can't do something, let's be honest and transparent and say why we can't. And that sends an important, there needs to be more communications. And everybody's busy doing their thing, but it's coming out of the silos, breaking things apart a little bit. There can't be enough communications, that, that's a key issue. So basically, I, I wanna just quickly go through, maybe pick a few of these, but you get the concept of what I'm talking about. So as we go down, things, there are greater and greater opportunities for improvement. What I recommend, in the comments, a bunch of people said, yeah, I'd recommend, but with reservation because of the department I'm in or some other issues. So people are mixed. Ideally, you'll never be a hundred, but you want that to be, we've seen organizations where it's eighty to ninety percent would say totally agree. So you, again, you wanna move the curve, you wanna move to the left as much as possible. The commitment to inclusion and communicate, this communicates to job candidates. This comes to that whole issue of how do you hire people? We'll talk more about that later, but that whole process for selecting and hiring candidates from within the college and from outside, needs some more attention. That's what they said in their comments and their readings. My direct manager provides strong commitment to excellence. Pretty good, but, but quite a few said no. It really depends on your department and who you report to. And an interesting thing that we see here and in all the other surveys we've seen elsewhere, there are managers, again, that people revere that are excellent, and there are others that frankly, don't belong in their position. And some people know that their boss or their boss's boss at some level isn't effective. And what happens is, if I'm an employee and I report to someone that I can't respect and that's making life very difficult for me and for others, and for students or whoever, customers, might be, I blame senior leadership as much as my manager, if not more. Because they should know that this is existing and this is a problem. And either they know and don't care and do nothing about it, or they don't know. If they don't know, they're ignorant, they're not doing their job. And if they do know and they're doing nothing about it, it's also a problem. So that's why senior leadership gets kind of low marks on this. But you've got some wonderful managers, some in the middle, and some in every organization, believe me, Facebook, Microsoft, no different. Same issues, it's universal. Pick the best of any field. Not everybody is made out to be a good leader. Some would be better doing, being on faculty again, not moving off or being in whatever department they were in. Oh wait, I just wanna go back. There are a few questions, like number fifteen. I can disagree with my direct manager or somebody else, there are a few different variations. And the point is, a lot of people said, I really don't feel comfortable based on my experience. I've been reprimanded, my colleagues have been reprimanded, I can't talk open mic. And, and that's not a healthy culture or situation. So am I enthused, oh, I'm sorry. Number sixteen, we, we had several questions around this idea. If I'm experiencing discrimination because of who I am, for whatever reason, or I see someone else experiencing it, am I comfortable reporting it? Do I know how and to who to report it, whether it's a designated department or a person or my boss or whatever? And the process for And the process for reporting and getting results and having it remain confidential, that whole thing is broken. It doesn't work. There's no other way to say it. Helen's jumped on it and she's got some actions going on there. But there's a real need to do all that better. So a lot of people just won't report. You know, it's the confidentiality of the information, even the timelines. Some of that to do research on it takes time. But if you don't report back to a person, and you maybe you can't tell them details, wouldn't be appropriate. But at least to let them know, we're still working on it, that type of thing. Is important. But that whole issue, there was a good half dozen questions around it. And we asked the faculty some questions about their perceptions of how students feel about some of these issues. And they were very similar, not thinking that students are comfortable reporting. The faculty's thoughts about students are really not much different, almost identical to the way. Faculty, others, all employees feel about themselves. Direct manager takes my suggestions about proving things seriously. Well, only half the people fully agree with that. So a lot of people said, you know, my boss's boss is pretty good, but they're not involved and my boss just is overwhelmed. Or they're not interested, or even if I tell them, they'll never do anything with it. So people feel stifled and turned off. And again, there isn't an organization in the world that doesn't experience this. There's nothing here unique to this college. It's a question of degree, and it's figuring out where the pockets are that need attention. Am I treated fairly with respect as related to my personal background and characteristics, whether it be gender, race, religion, whatever? As significant numbers of people, only half felt they can fully agree to that. So as we come down, the numbers are gonna get lower, less percents agree. This was a big one. A lot of comments around twenty five. My direct manager holds employees accountable for behavior not in keeping with the values. You've got some excellent. I call it aspirational statements, mission, values, vision for the future. So the question is, how do you close the gap between today's reality? Across the campuses, but especially in certain departments with the aspirations. That's really the challenge and the opportunity. Colleagues treated with respect as relates to the background, personal characteristics. Should we have a new student orientation program that includes all this stuff? Does the college thirty has no tolerance for discrimination against students based on their backgrounds? So a lot of people said, we need to improve it. Again, I I wanna be mindful of our time and get get to some of the key things, so. Are students comfortable reporting and all that? Again, very low numbers. That's the sense. What we're recommending in this thing is, go do a student survey, probably next spring. Find out directly from students. And there are a bunch of other kinds of questions you can ask in terms. Do they know who to go to if they need help just getting through here, so they're not gonna run into difficulty being able to get through the programs? So there's a bunch of things you can ask students. Get some participation, really learn firsthand from them. And some of that. I've done a lot of consulting over the years. I know what focus groups, I know what all this. The beauty of a survey, they could save you money. This is not a promotional thing. Uh, I've learned there are ways, there are things where you wanna consult hands-on, you wanna focus groups for different reasons. But in a survey, you can get input from a lot of people. I know when I used to do a lot of consulting work, I go and I talk to some people. It's as good as who I did, but if you talk to only some people, and they may have some biases or they may have footers on them. The minute you can give them en masse an opportunity to say what they want anonymously. It's at least a great starting point to capture as much data as you can, and then you can research it and drill down beyond that through other approaches. Let's get towards towards the bottom. It's this in the last slide. The college takes appropriate action in response to discriminatory and abusive incidents. Only twenty one percent agree with that. That that's their perception. The college treats all employees fairly regardless of their position. So it's not just, you know, who you are in terms of demographics, but if if you are lower down in the reporting level. People feel, I'm not taken seriously. And I'll share, one one person had this comment, you know, I come to the parking lot, get out of the car. There's some more senior level person. They don't acknowledge my existence. They won't look at me, they won't say hello. I then end up a number of times in meetings with this person. They talk with lots of people, they won't look at me. You know, and the point is, that person could initiate the discussion with the senior person. People at a lower reporting level don't feel comfortable doing it. It's gotta be the other way around. It it, call it civility, whatever. But but they're, and again, not unique to the college. Feel comfortable expressing views on issues important to me, even if I know others may disagree. These are low numbers. It needs some real attention. Students know whom to report acts again. Perception of faculty is no. The college handles reported acts effectively well. And then the last four. The college handles reported acts against employees with urgency and they feel, no, these things just linger on and on. Employees can't express their ideas and things and beliefs without fear of retribution. Only fifteen percent. That needs urgent attention. Maybe the most important issue in the whole survey is essentially this one. High trust level between senior leadership and employees. There's a real significant gap here. Until that gap is closed by earning that respect and trust, there's a limit to what can be done. And that's done by being visible, by talking, by getting around, much more communication. And demonstrating that there will be change, some meaningful change. Not everything. But things will start to happen. With with a reasonable level of urgency. And again, handling reported acts effectively. These are really low numbers. We don't see the soft mean in those surveys. We looked at a lot of different demographics. Here in terms of primary and a high level position. And what we found in each one of them, we gave people the opportunity, we didn't mandate that they answer the question. Most did, but significant numbers didn't. We put them in that category of unanswered. The people that were not comfortable answering these because they felt it might give away where they're not, they're anonymous. So that was their way of doing the survey, but not usually where it's unanswered, the overall averages are lower than what people would say. But in every one of these, there's quite a bit of variation between the highest rated group, the middle, and the lowest. I wouldn't overly read too much in. Sometimes they're larger groups, sometimes they're small, but you can get it. And this is all questions combined coming into this thing. By division. Some variation. By campus, the more remote, not only because they're remote, but the nature of what goes on at Wake and Shot is different. And it came out significantly higher statistically significant. Gender identity, some variation there. Men seem to be more positive than women. Don't ask me to explain. It's it's what they're experiencing and how they feel. Sexual identity. Some variation there. Ethnic identity, again. Different variation. Some of the groups where they were less than ten, we know the number, but we just said, you know, ten or less. Not to try to push it. You know, if we told you there are two people and people know who they are, you can get it. So we we came up with that. Education level, and what you find there is, within reason, doctoral and master's, the more education, the lower the numbers. You can interpret it the way you want, but that's that's what people are saying. I wouldn't, you know, the the no high school, there was a small number of people. In staff, certain staff, maybe in maintenance departments, I don't remember sure what that was, but um. That just went down. Everything's perfect. And maybe that's their reality, and maybe they just didn't feel comfortable saying anything different. By age, with the exception of people, and there are not many of them, that said they were twenty five or under. It's largely, the older you are, the more positive you are. That holds true pretty much throughout. Military status, some data. Most people were not in the military. Religious, spiritual, you get that same kind of variation. Here we're getting to that, those other three questions where it was yes or no. Very important questions. The first ones. Have you, you yourself, the person doing the survey, have you experienced, personally experienced exclusionary, intimidating. Offensive or hostile harassing conduct interfering with your ability to work or learn at the college? And what employees said is thirty one percent plus said, yes, I've experienced this stuff. That's a pretty high number. Then we asked, have you, not yourself, but have you experienced it where others you work with? Have gone through those experiences? Half the people said, yes, I haven't, but I've seen someone else experiencing these situations. And finally, have you observed unfair or unjust employment practices? That may be, I didn't get this opportunity to apply for a job, or I did, but it was a cursory interview. They weren't taking me seriously. They already had, seen a lot of comments. They knew who they were gonna take, and they just like went through the process to check off that they interviewed some people. Or they had such a strong bias to go outside, no insider had an opportunity. Or they went outside and it was clear that there are biases to hire people of certain backgrounds versus others. Others are saying, you know, there's not enough focus on hiring people with a lot of experience and competence. It's more to bring in other factors. Others are saying, there's not enough. So there are people on every side of every issue. That's to be expected. But the process then for hiring and recruiting, sorting those kinds of things out, really needs some attention. What is the way this college wants it done? And then train people on how to do that and do some checks and accountability on that. Because what we saw is very significant inconsistencies in this whole hiring and recruiting process. And also in the performance management process, how how performance reviews are doing, what kind of feedback if any is given. Some people do that well, some don't. So there's some processes across the board that need some real attention. Key things. We had ten keys, uh, ten key sections, all with several questions, some more than others in the survey. So here's how it came out. At the top, employee engagement and commitment to the college came out with a pretty good score of four point one two. And the reason, you know, I've talked about engagement being possibly kind of low. You'd want that considerably higher, but in some departments, it's much higher than others. And what a bunch of people said in their comments, and we see this in any survey we do like this, is, I feel I'm personally engaged. They give it a higher rating, but that's because I'm professional, I was brought up that way, that's who I am. But it's not because anything my manager or anyone else at the college is doing. So that pushed it off. Others are saying, you know, I'm trying my damnedest, but I'm running into too many obstacles. And that's why those ratings uh were lower. My direct manager, what's happening there is, there are a lot of good managers. But it's also where someone's manager isn't that effective and it came down lower. They're taking it out on senior leadership down below. They're tolerating this person being the manager. So I'm mad at my manager for being my manager, but I'm even more mad at the senior people that they need to know who this person is and do something about it. And that that's really the the way to interpret that. Uh, the college culture overall. Especially in certain areas needs real attention. And this whole process again for reporting acts of discrimination views. Particularly well. Any any questions on this? It's important enough to take a second. Concept organizational effectiveness. What that is, and it's extremely important concept. It's basically creating the conditions necessary. For the whole organization and for people working here, no matter what their job is, to do their best possible job every day. And to enable them and the people they support, whether it's an internal customer in another department. People in IT supporting everybody, or faculty supporting students, to enable your internal or external customer to thrive. So what are those conditions? And we found in the survey, there are quite a few barriers to organizational effectiveness. Things that are not allowing things to work as well as they can be. So employee engagement, we talked about, but what we're talking about here is. When someone's really engaged, they're fully involved in their job, they really they have a passion for it, they wanna come in every day, do their best possible job. And some people feel that way, quite if you will, they're stoned. Gallup has published a number of times this this number of seventy percent. They're saying, based on the work they've done. Seventy percent of the workforce in the US is disengaged. That's probably a little bit of an overstatement, and most people are not engaged or disengaged. It varies by time of day, uh, by day of the week, you know, there may be personal problems or something's going on. Some, it depends on your current boss. There are a whole host of things. But when someone is disengaged, they're just not as passionate in wanting to do the job they can. And and if the mission is to educate students to the best of ability. Then anybody that's not fully engaged, you're missing an opportunity. They're not getting as much value as with somebody engaged. So employees' experiences affect their feelings, their morale, and their satisfaction. And their feelings, morale, and satisfaction affect how engaged they are, their performance, and how well the organization works. As a total organization, where each part really relies on the others. It's it's a whole, it's like an orchestra. You can have some wonderful um people in the orchestra, but if you don't have a good conductor and everything's working together, it just doesn't work right. The third point I wanna get across, this concept of cognitive cognitive dissonance. And really what that is simply is. People before this survey had a perspective, right or wrong, their own perspective. Of how things are going on at the college. And it's probably true that for a number of people. What we found here is very different from what people anticipated and thought was going on. And that's the whole idea. What your brain and what your experiences are saying versus a new reality. I get new data, something. So the knee jerk reaction, do I buy this stuff or is it a lot of nonsense? Do I get on board or, you know, we've seen, I I joke with people, you know, I come into meetings like this, I'm really not wearing a bullproof vest. But wear the messenger, shoot the messenger, you know, you get those issues. Is it is it accurate or not? For those people that did the survey, it's accurate. It's probably reasonably respond uh accurate for the whole population. So a bunch of findings. At the topmost level, you know, many positives. But there are a lot of barriers that get in the way, and that's somewhat dependent. Some of it's across the board, like in the hiring practices. But some groups are doing it better than others. Certain things are very specific to given departments. There's a greater opportunity to take action there. So it depends what department, who you report to, personal characteristics. And frankly, a very important issue is expectations. Some people have much loftier expectations than others. Some have never experienced something very positive, don't expect more, and others really want and expect more. From the organization. At at the college, many employees report experiencing inequities and exclusionary situations based on their own personal characteristics. So there are a bunch of things. Some because, you know, it's just who they are. So there are a bunch of things. Some because, you know, it's just who they are. And, and each of us is a combination of a number of things. And, and one thing that's becoming more and more important today, uh beyond this, that was not in there, but a number of people commented on it. We didn't give them that opportunity to talk directly. What happens in surveys, if you only ask a certain question that's important to some people, they'll find a place to come and say. It's, you can't hide from it, so it's better to ask the questions. But this whole thing here, um there were some issues, we did ask this about physical abilities, some people getting access. Not everything is, is accessible, certain doors to get in, lacks of, lack of ramps, that type of thing. But this last one, there, there, there are a number of people that talk about, I can't express because I, my political views are conservative. And that doesn't fly on this or any other campus. Campuses tend to be more um liberal, to left, on average, but not totally. So there, there are students, there are faculty who just feel they're put down, they don't dare mention anything um because of that. So there's so many of these different factors that, that's the key point, that come into it. That some of us don't stop to realize that I may be seeing something very different than somebody else. You've heard of this situation where sometimes there's an accident or some incident and there are five people saw it and they, five people saw very different things, important. That's the same thing here. It's what we see, what we, our perceptions, our misperceptions, and I guarantee there's some misperceptions. People quickly come to conclusions, there's some hearsay that goes into this. But it's sorting it through, but everybody's perception is their own reality. Differing perceptions, um many people feel that diversity, equity, and inclusion issues are very real. People are serious about it and they're real issues. There are others that feel that overall things are quite good, and that there are some highly vocal agitators within and outside that are unnecessarily and improperly stirring the pot. And if you just get rid of that, things will be perfect. That's not the real case. But to some people, that's to be avoided. S- some people don't believe that their negative diversity, inequity, and inclusion issues exist at all. There are some people like that. Some feel that too much emphasis is being placed on all this stuff. Why don't we go back to, we didn't, things seem to be fine in their perception. For others, their reality is quite different. Specific key findings, the need to increase the level of trust and respect between leaders and employees, probably the number one issue. Uh and that's gotta be earned. There's a large perception gap between leaders and employees on, on lots of issues. Insufficiently ineffective communications. You cannot ever in any organization communicate enough. And yet people are busy doing their, what they perceive as their priorities. And we cite this sometimes, or people are not comfortable. It's like ma- they used to say management by walking around, get out there, talk with people, find out what's going on. Share some perspectives, that type of thing. Some managers don't know what's happening at the employee level. There are a lot of managers that are managing up, they're not down, they don't know what's going on. People said that in the comments. Based on their experiences, some employees have a lot of fear, don't trust their manager. And some senior level people, based on their own personal experiences or hearsay from certain fellow employees. Employees don't understand some of the issues and constraints that managers face every day. And some managers at the lower levels, by the way, whenever they have issues, let's blame someone up above. And a lot of times that's totally wrong and inappropriate, with not taking ownership of issues they can deal with. Some people, and there are a number of comments about this, managers at different levels just are not effective in what they do. There are constraints to the organization, um do, doing as effectively as you can. People saying that they're disengaged, many employees report having personally experienced or observed discriminatory interviews incidents. Many people report not knowing or trusting that process for reporting. Again, I'm being repetitive, but summarizing what I said before when we looked at, at the data. I'm gonna jump ahead, 'cause I want more time, just to hear you add and respond. I, I guess the last two or three, uh people are concerned about the effectiveness of senior leadership team. And about who the next president would be. That's a real critical issue. That, that person is inheriting a lot of issues to deal with. Do they have the temperament, the communications ability? And there are a lot of process issues here that need to be dealt with, whether they directly or they know how to manage that whole thing. This is a big project management uh task, to start putting in all the pieces together, to plan it out, to hold people accountable for making needed change. And, and a lot of concerns in the comments about, will anything really change as a result of the survey? Did, did anyone hear it and reported? We see that all over uh in other organizations. Some, bunch of recommendations, and I'll, I'll go quickly, but um there's some general ones. The need to communicate all, this stuff, some of these things are happening now, the next two, three days. But the idea that, um create a comprehensive um transformation action plan. All this stuff doesn't mean anything if the data isn't taken, understood, and then transitioned into a plan of action. So how to create the plan of what needs to be done? The starting point, I would hope, is to take the recommendations in this report, but then to personalize them, add to them, and do what the team, leadership team really feels needs to get done. So take this as, as a starting point, but then go into much more detail. Getting people involved. What's happening is, some people get involved in every committee, some people never get involved in a committee. There needs to be more opportunities for some people. And, and part of it is, a lot of people in specific groups tend to segregate within their group, and it's not intermingling. You, you go into a cafeteria in many organizations and people of the same backgrounds go to lunch together. Whether it's departmental or whether it's personal characteristics. I, I was hearing things today, ha- having some lunch, um about bowling league you have and how diverse the people are. Things like that are wonderful because you can get people of different backgrounds to get to know each other while they're bowling. Over beer, over pizza later, whatever, you start to get to know each other and be comfortable in a way that sometimes in the work environment, you just can't do. There, there's a concept that's been going around in the last few years, where people, there are articles about it. Coming up with opportunities, the way buildings are designed and doing other things, for, they call it collisions. How do we recreate, uh create opportunities for people to collide around the coffee station? Walking through the hallways, so they get talking to each other, someone has an idea, it comes up another idea, and the next thing you know, you got a good invention or something like that. But it's no different. Someone's experiencing an issue, an opportunity, can you collaborate, can you talk? So if, if people are all not comfortable talking and sharing, then they think, you know, they don't understand the culture and background of some people, they exclude them. Where those people may have some wonderful ideas and can add a lot of value. So how do you maybe exclude some people that are too included? I, I, there's never too much inclusion, but the same people tend to be doing the same committees over and over again. Let's get some new blood in, stir it up a bit. You'd be surprised sometimes, wonder if things can't happen. Measuring and communicating ongoing progress. If you can get some wins on the board as a result of all this, and communicate that, and if it's true and invisible, it's like that Hawthorne effect. Unbelievable positive things can happen. Selecting the right president, that is gonna be critical, and it's not easy. I understand, I, I don't, um I can only imagine the deliberations that are probably going on. Some specific, uh I'm gonna let you read this stuff there, a bunch of specific recommendations, um based on that analysis. I, I'd like to think they make a lot of sense, says, based on um personal experiences I've had, doing lots of this over decades. But I'll tell you, the zero tolerance policy, that's, that's a real critical one. The idea that you're no longer gonna tolerate inappropriate behavior on important people. Give them an opportunity, but not the law. You know, it's, there's certain behaviors that just kill everything. And, and there's gotta be a mechanism. Get people to change, and it's very hard to get adults to change. If they're not willing or able, maybe they're the wrong person for the job. Put all this equity inclusion stuff into a performance objectives of employees, uh especially managers, to start dealing with it. Identify and deal with those people. And I'll tell you what, if, if you can replace some of the ineffective people with more effective people, that will be the most important shot fired around and experienced around the world here in any organization. I don't know else to say it. They finally caught up with so and so. They've been screwing up the place forever and they finally did something about it. That word goes like wildfire through the organization, any organization. You know, you've got, I guess Title Nine Director, others call it the head of equity inclusion. Getting the right person in there is important. Throw a thought at you. Some people have that position as reporting at the top. My feeling, my experience is, get them reporting into H R and get a crackerjack, top notch person running H R. Because most of these issues are H R related. You need that to be a very effective function. And all the separate inclusion stuff is really a subset of H R. When you isolate it separately, it doesn't work as well. So just a thought there. Closing that gap between the mission vision to core principles and reality. Make attending, training, there's a program called Crossroads. A bunch of people took it upon themselves, put it together, got some really positive response and comments about it. But some, no negativity, but more suggestions for making it better. You know, make it mandatory for everybody to attend it, um and I would agree at some point. Make sure managers do it sooner rather than later. But take data from this survey, integrate it into that thing. Start looking, and, and a real challenge in any organization is the people that need this kind of training the most, either will find a way not to attend, or they're not gonna get value from it. They're so set in their ways, they're gonna be repeat offenders. It's hard to change that. So just by checking it off, okay, we did the training, that's not gonna do it. It, it's a necessary, but by far not sufficient thing that needs to be done. It's the leadership that's gonna be more important than accountability and dealing with issues, but it's a critical piece. You know, help, uh make the culture more positive. A lot of need, people said, for more accountability. Too much favoritism going in on their own departments, uh holding managers and fellow employees for doing their job. And, and a lot of people said, you know, my manager isn't accountable, or their coworkers are not doing their fair share of the work, or other things like that. Review and enhance the equity inclusion trains I mentioned. I don't know if there are enough people to mentor or doing, but it's the concept of providing for those that particularly need to become more effective managers and leaders. Is there someone real good at it that can help coach and advise them, that they can talk with on an ongoing basis? And if they're not internally, and I, I'm spending your money, but maybe it gets them, there are people who do this for a living, coaching on the outside. And sometimes you could even do that on a team basis rather than individual, to get more bang for the buck. But in some way, that, I would also talk about a leadership training program, whether you bring someone from another college that has a good management program in, or send some people out. Again, spending some money, but this whole management thing is critical. Together with backfilling better people going forward through a better, stronger process. It's the idea of, how do we strengthen the current people that need some strengthening? And, and leadership, again, th- there's a technical component, knowing how to manage effectively. And there's that behavioral piece, and, and they both have to be reasonably right. We talked about that. Getting everybody on the same page of the definition of what diversity is and how to deal with that. Enhancing communications and collaboration.
Can you say a little bit more about number fifteen?
Sure. This con- and Helen, please pipe it or anyone else, but the whole idea of what is diversity? How do you feel about an individual? Am, am I, as a old white man, and you look at me, that's who I am, okay? How can I relate to others? Do I have biases against plaid people or paisley people or something like that, you know? And why? Or can I be open and understand the value they bring to the organization? And, and I have to be open to that, and how do we get the best out of all of us working together? So it's, starting out of this, I would encourage the start of much more dialogue within training, within department meetings, um focus groups, management walking around and talking with people and being visible. Getting people to start being open to these things and understanding, my reality may be very different from someone else's. Helen, your thoughts?
No, I was just particularly interested in the part where you talk about expanding the definition in that first paragraph. Should be expanded to include economic diversity, addressing speciality, and diversity of thought and tolerance. I don't think we always go that far with it.
But it's critical, you know, in any organization, people come at it from different. I'm, I'm sitting at, um I was recommended to stay at the Eagle Land, that's where I'm staying. Had a quick breakfast and I got to meet a guy whose wife came from San Tabarba, they live in Oklahoma. Terrific guy. We got talking for ten minutes. And um he's telling me, boy, there's one mindset in Oklahoma. You know, everyone's the same way, very conservative. And my sense is he was that way, but he's open to saying, we need to talk, you know? The red states are one way, the blue are another, the fact is there are pockets across the board. How do we get people to start understanding where everybody's coming from and bring it together? Because there's some validity to everybody's perspective and that's their reality. And whether it's at this college or anyplace else in the world, I think an awful lot of people have no clue what's in their own best interest. You know, they, they live their own reality, some of it's 'cause what they're hearing on television or from a friend or this or that. And they don't stop to think enough about what, what's really going on. And the more we can get people to think and be open and say, someone has a different perspective, will want, you know, how did they grow up, what makes them different, to learn and get, get to understand each other. That way we can work better collectively. You know, there are comments, you know, people, you know, agnostics, atheists, that type thing. I, I've seen it elsewhere too. You know what? This place is very religiously tolerant, as long as you admit to having a religion. If you don't, keep your mouth shut, don't let anyone know that. It's people have trouble understanding, how could it be that you don't have a religion and believe in something beyond yourselves? But that's the reality of some people. So um it's understanding all this type of thing. Talked about communication, accessibility for employees and students that have various kinds of disabilities. Whether it be sight, hearing, physical disabilities, some good things have happened here and elsewhere. Comments suggest more has to get made. Talk, again, it may be some money, some other things, but can something be done in the area of reward and recognition to recognize people who do real positive things? There's a lot to be done and can be done in that area. Some organizations have done quite a bit with it. There's a lot to be done and can be done in that area, some organizations have done quite a bit with it. The role of H R in any organization is extremely critical. There were a number of comments that suggested in the past, there were some real issues in H R here. Um, so it's strengthening the leadership in the whole department. Um, that gets around the hiring practices and performance measurement and and a ton of. You know, H R's got a list like this and you need a strong effective H R department. That knows how to deal with things confidentially. Because there were quite a few comments about H R doesn't handle things confidentially, that need to be handled confidentially. Again, we suggest a student survey to hear directly from them. Do the do this survey again, probably in the next spring. Hopefully, you're gonna get enough done between now until about the same time that that this week's done. Uh, or or in fact, in the even say the spring of twenty twenty one. But out of a while, come back and do this. Um, conduct a comprehensive engagement. There are a bunch of issues that are done in more broad surveys than this that you probably wanna look at. So down the road, two, three years from now, probably wanna do that. For now, you got more than enough to chew on with this thing, I I wouldn't go do that. But maybe three years or so down the road. It would be worth getting into some other important issues, I can show you examples of other kinds of issues to look at. So some of the key challenges facing the college. Uh, addressing and overcoming high levels of cynicism, distrust, fear. And low levels for some people in some departments, satisfaction, engagement and morale. Again, conducting the survey sends a message you wanna hear. If you do nothing about it, very problematic. Um, and if if people don't see positive things happening, you're telling them, I'm not serious about it. So people are gonna become more cynical, not less. So it's it's really urgent that some positive things start happening on an ongoing basis. Facing the college, um. The vision, mission, all these things, they're aspirational and they're really good. I've seen others not so good. The issue is now making that a reality for everybody. So there's this closing that gap between what that says and the reality that people are experiencing. Um, that's what this whole thing is about. So talking this stuff up is pretty good in training and whenever there's an opportunity. Um, key challenges facing this in every other organization. According to McKinsey, probably the most well-known and the largest consulting firm in the world, and they're pretty good. Uh, over seventy percent of all organizational transformations. And what what I'm suggesting is this is not tweaking around, this is a significant transformation that has to happen. Culture, leadership, other process issues. Over seventy percent of all transformation efforts failed to meet their objectives or outright totally failed. It's that difficult to make it happen. And if it's if not enough attention is done, who does that, how that's done? The planning, the execution, it won't be successful here. You're not gonna beat the odds just by wishing. The next president, the team around it, all that stuff is critical. Another point, piecemeal solutions tinkering around the edges of the issues really don't do work. Maybe you get a little short-term gain. So it's how to create lasting change, not easy. Uh, deciding what to change as a result of the survey, how to organize for success as for a transformation. Change is extremely difficult, people don't, some people embrace and love change, others fearful. So it's sorting all all that type of thing out. Who really needs to lead this change, I'll get to it in the next slide or two. Identifying and removing those barriers we identified in the survey that get in the way of making meaningful change. Poor performing disruptive managers, again, we talked about, they're gonna kill everything if not careful. Overcoming resistance to change, that's a real big issue. Um, changing behavior of adults is real tough. So you've gotta keep that in mind. My experience, twenty years of doing this and a lot of other experiences before my career. We we find that eighty percent of the organizations we've been doing the surveys for for twenty years now. Failed to take significant action as a result of. Uh, surveys, the survey findings. They just, you know, it's like people going to their doctor, you go for the annual physical. The doctor says you need to change your behavior, you need this medication, you need to get a little more exercise. Push yourself away from the table, whatever combination it is. People say, thanks doc, and they go back doing the same stuff, come back a year later, nothing's changed. Same thing happens in organizations. It's people are so busy, you've heard the story about trying to change a tire on a car doing sixty miles an hour? That's the challenge here. It's it's hard, unless you really plan for it, business as usual gets in the way. So how do how do people react to change? You know, this is a generalization, but there are typically a quarter of the people in most organizations, managers, employees. That really want and embrace positive change, they lead the way. There's another quarter that really wanted as well as the first group. But they're not willing to stick their neck out and be leaders to make it happen, they're gonna wait and see. Which of my peers are on board leading the way? And this is something where it's gonna work, because if it isn't, I'm not gonna put any energy and not do it. The last third, uh, this, the third third is those people who are quite disengaged, they don't know about the new change much. They're hiding from things and they hope, well, this is like most other changes ever happened. It'll come and go, so why bother? You know, it's nothing that's gonna happen. And then there's this final third that or quarter that kind of lay down across the railroad tracks. And try to obstruct everything that ever happens. Okay, so it's taking these people and pushing them up the scale. How many of these bottom ones could move up and and so on? Um, and if some people won't change, they're at the bottom, maybe they just are in the wrong position, maybe there's a better job than here or elsewhere. So some priorities for leadership, it's it's really comes down to assessing and understanding the current reality. So we learned some stuff in the survey, you may have some other perspectives to bring into it that we don't see in the survey. But taking the whole thing between leadership and the board, all the constituent groups. Outsiders, students, unions, faculty, staff. How do you get everybody to look at this and agree that maybe this is the reality? And and how do we work together to change things? Coming up with a good plan for success, execution of that plan effectively, and then ongoing assessment progress. Um, really, it requires what I would call a holistic transformation, not just looking at one or two items. But there are a lot of different issues, um, strengthening leadership. The governance types of issues, warden things and faculty governance, bringing that in, the culture. What's the direction? Now, I read in the co- I I know what I saw in the comments, valid or not. So some people were quite concerned about the direction, you know, some programs have been cut out. Um, so therefore, certain groups are not getting the support they need, on and on. And the fact is, maybe there's some very valid reasons for doing those things from a budgetary or legal or other perspectives. But I'm wondering if these people got that message and speaking communicated enough and effectively. And the point is, anything that needs to be communicated, saying it once doesn't never do it. You know, it's like for those that have a spouse or a partner. Frequently, you gotta say, hi, I love you. You know, saying it once a year doesn't do it, type of thing. And so it's the same, people need to hear things quite a bit. So what's the direction? And from this, the board and leadership team may wanna chart somewhat of a different direction. I I call it, and I think it's a common term in recent years, reimagining the whole organization. We we know where we are sort of from the survey and other data you have. Is that good, but given the mission, the vision and all those statements, the aspirations? What do we wanna change? This this is an ideal opportunity now to catch your breath, digest some of this and start thinking, where do you wanna change? But communicate that, here's why we're going in a certain direction, here's the rationale and you need to do it. Um, performance, staff, faculty, you know, we wanna raise up the excellence there. Build on those strengths already in place, do more performance management, performance reviews. Uh, focusing a lot on process issues, some of the processes at the organization are weak. It needs some attention. What are the students' real needs, which ones are being met, which not? And the outside community, what what do they expect to need, are they being met? Let me summarize here, sort of a flow chart that looks at this whole thing as a process. What I'm suggesting, it's a holistic process. There are a lot of issues we found that I would call systemic. They're almost across the board, maybe not in every last department. Whether it's the hiring practice, something else, it's a real process issue, it's a training issue. And there are other issues like that here. So there's systemic, so what do you need to do? It's what are the student, students or the customers as well as the outside population? What are their real requirements? And when are we meeting them? The mission, vision, those are wonderful, leave, I put it in yellow, check it off, it's done, unless you wanna change it for some reason. What strategies as a result of what we learned need to be done to change that, to make things happen? What are the tactical plans? So that takes some real thought and planning. Then, some of you may be familiar with this, but it's the idea, where are we today? Organizational effectiveness assessment, that's largely what we did here with the survey. So check it off, you pretty well have the data. You may have other things you wanna add to it that you know that we don't know from the survey. So you've got that, but now that reimagining, where do we wanna be going forward? Do we need to change the size, the makeup of who we bring in the students? Are there programs we wanna add, or are there programs that really don't make any sense anymore for whatever reason? Um, the leadership issues and so on, so take some time, catch your breath, don't run into it too fast. Being slow is a high risk, but being too fast without thinking it through is just as bad or worse. Because then you might do a lot of things that don't make as much sense in in hindsight. Um, and then, once you've got that reimagining, how do we get there? And that's a transformation plan with all the strategies and tactics to carry that forward. Um, and then, plans are wonderful, but how you execute them is just more important. And that takes some real project management, all these things, they have project management skills. That often don't, many organizations don't have those kinds of skills. Sometimes you've really gotta bring somebody in, uh, that has skills like that. So from that, what are the conditions for achieving the intended outcomes? Well, through a process like that, you come, what what are the outcomes we wanna achieve? And then, we need senior leadership support and oversight of that whole thing. I'm suggesting what you need any organization needs, if you're undertaking a massive transformation, as we saw in the numbers from. Uh, that McKinsey talks about, is seriously consider. Whether you have such a person in-house or you need to go outside, a senior level person. Because the new president will be too busy to also do this. But under that president, and and with the board's total knowledge of what's happening on an ongoing basis. Someone who's a real good planner and communicator. And knows how to make things happen and hold things accountable and is empowered to make those things happen, to get their hands around this whole thing. That could be a big piece of success or failure here. Okay, it's almost like the missing link and most organizations don't do something like that. But it's, I can't emphasize enough how important something like that is. And you know, it's probably someone from the outside. And and maybe it's even a retired person who had a real key position elsewhere that, you know, wants to pay back to the organization. Whatever, but something like that. And you take a look at the survey and other action team involvement, stuff like that. Get all this and you just wanna keep, every year, ongoing, continuous improvement, you wanna keep getting better and better. You don't do it all in one year, it just doesn't happen. You never get perfection, and what's today's perfection is not tomorrow's perfection. The world keeps changing. So what what's good now, so the idea of being open, and that's what the surveys and other mechanisms. Keeping your eyes out to not only what's happening here, but where's the world going? How do we need to adjust or change? Any thoughts on that?
Um, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome very much, thank you.
Um, you've given us so, so much to digest and to and to keep in mind and to consider going forward. We need at least twenty minutes for the student equity plan, so we've got, you know, maybe ten minutes or so. Unfortunately for questions. Before we get to the questions though, I wanna report something that seems like a natural segue, and that is. As you know, we're going through a process to hire a new president. Try as we can, try as we must, with Dr. Benjamin will be leaving at the end of December. Um, and I can report, yesterday was the last day for applicants. We have, uh, forty-two applicants.
Wow.
Um, our consultant has told me she's extremely pleased with the size of the pool. It's a national pool, applicants from all across the country. Overwhelming majority of the applicants are from outside of California, but we still have very strong candidates, I'm told, from California. We have gender and ethnic diversity among the candidates, we have geographic diversity. And in short, our consultant says that the applicant pool looks very, very promising. So we have a screening committee that will be airing the candidates down and we'll be interviewing their recommendations at the end of October.
Terrific.
And with that, I'll.
Can I respond to that and consider that a comment or question? I think it's gonna be critical to make sure that the ones you're, you feel the strongest that you won't get. That they understand about the survey and the findings and what the challenges are ahead. So they know what they're getting into, and I don't mean that as a nasty negative thing. They need to understand what their challenges are going to be going forward. And in your selection process, it's keeping in mind what you learned here. To help decide which of those are the best candidate to do this among many other things. Um, it it, this is too critical to just say, we did this, now let's just go find a president. And I think you you won't know that, but I I just feel compelled to say that.
We may call you back to give this presentation again to our.
Ha- happy to do it, by the way, uh, I can't do this with everybody in the college and it wouldn't be appropriate. But certainly for the senior team and for the board, my name and phone number's on the cover page. Email me, call me, I'm not gonna charge you for it. Uh, I want you to succeed, I get psychic income from that. Um, don't hold back, okay? If you wanna talk about some issues, please do. Um, but any comments or thoughts or?
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, I know we have very little time, so I think what I'll say is the things that stood out the most to me. First of all is that we're hearing this loud and clear from the employees, I mean, at least I am. I want everyone to know that this is alarming and I'm hearing it and we need to be acting, so. Just wanted to say that, I think it's important to say. Um, I think what you had in one of the slides, which is doing well and improving in all these areas will make us a standout college. And maybe will attract more, you know, employees and more students to this place because, you know, we've done really well in these areas. And I think that was a great point and observation to make, that we can be an example in this area and not. Uh, you know, a bad, not, instead of a bad example, a really great and amazing example. Um, I just think that a lot of these issues are policy-related too, and I think that's the board's realm. And I think we really need to strengthen our, I mean, policies of all kinds, discrimination, zero tolerance, anti-bullying. Um, our disability access policies, our management training policies. There's a lot in here that is our, uh, and that we need to be doing, and I I'm looking forward to getting those done. And having them be some of the strongest we've ever had, making them stronger and then doubling that. Because we cannot be anywhere near where we are right now. Making them stronger and then doubling that, because we cannot be anywhere near where we are right now.
And I I wanna respond to one thing you said. Not many, but there were a few comments that someone recommended, a friend, to be an employee here, faculty or not, and the person interviewed, that type of thing, and said, after they found out what's going on, they chose not to come here. So the word is out, it's before the survey even, you know? When things change, and you got that thirty percent who kinda feel the way they do, you you don't contain those stays. Word travels throughout the community and so on, a- and that's exactly what I hear him saying, you know? It's, it's changing that mindset. We were once, I'd like to consider myself part of we, but we're saying, we were once the number one community college in the country, and we've got the right structure and ability to charter the course to get right back there in a reasonable amount of time. And and the support and intention to make that happen. So yeah, what you're saying is wonderful.
And just one last point is, I didn't mention, but the hiring is, I feel like that came up almost as much as the no response and discrimination. Uh, that's very concerning, how, uh, cause that's in the way of our faculty diversity policies and things that we, goals that we have for not doing well in hiring, we're not meeting our goals.
Thank you. Trustee Parker.
Yes, um, yeah, I I'm sorry that we have a limited amount of time to talk about it, um.
Tell you what, like I said, if you wanna park me on a bench somewhere, come back after your meeting, just to talk.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
Um, but just in terms of the public record, um, I think that there are so, there are so many topics that are covered here. Um, so many board pol-, there's, I feel like we need to do an analysis in terms of, where does it touch board policy, where does it touch board vision? Um, and so we need to get that figured out. But one of the things I really think is important, I don't know when the last time this type of a survey was done for employees, if ever?
I would go as if ever.
Okay, so no one would ever, um, I do think we need to build it into policy that this is something that we involve our our employees in on a very regular basis, because, um, if you allow it to never be surveyed, or to be surveyed so rarely that you just, we can go completely in the wrong direction without understanding it. Um, I'm really glad that we have this material to work with now. I'm looking forward to hearing more about what our employees are saying over the next few weeks. Um, and, uh, but I do think that they need to be involved in this discussion, uh, very, uh, uh, in a very targeted way, in a very meaningful way, on a regular basis, and that should be in policy.
Let let me, let me just add, I think probably sometime in the next month or two, whatever is appropriate, we need to have this on our agenda and talk about follow-up to what we've, what we've learned here today, what the board can do to, uh, facilitate many of the things that have been, uh, suggested.
So what we would like to do after the focus groups, and we get that report, we'd like to come back. Do you have it agendized? I guess, I mean, we're getting a lot of stuff in here, maybe in November, I don't know, but so you can see the results of that and tell, talk to you about plans and.
If I can, once you bring the new president on board, if it's helpful for me to talk with that person, spend some time, that may be useful.
Sure.
Whatever you think. Any others?
The other questions, trustee, has it?
My, my question really takes off from Kate's, and that has to do with the s- suggestions for the proper role of the Board of Trustees in particularly in the transformational stage, that feels very operational. But it it seems to me that there may be, there may be a significant role perhaps in the development of policy that serves the purpose of encouraging, or maybe even besting it. Your thoughts?
I would agree, I I think, I've done this at other organizations. To the credit here, most organizations won't dare show anything like this to the board. Anyone remember what happened at Wells Fargo with the loan issues and the cross-selling and all that? Either the board knew, and senior leadership looked the other way. And I gotta believe, if they're doing employee surveys, they knew. And I guarantee they're doing employee surveys, and they just, I know nothing, I hear nothing, okay? That's intellectually and every other way dishonest and unethical. So, a lot of times, leadership, believe me, I deal with colleges and other places, some have been disopen, some not at all. You want me to show it to the board? It's like taking a gun to my own head type of thing. Boards can't be effective if they don't hear what's going on. So I think they're numbered, the support, and maybe, you know, the direction. If there are new programs or programs to be closed down or whatever, that's really a board issue. I would think to quite extent. And having this information could be very valuable to you. Help sort out, where do you wanna go? What do you wanna do? So I I I think there's some challenges with some wonderful opportunities, once you have this information, to see what what can be done. I I don't know if I may answer your question, but I.
Yeah.
You know, I I I think keeping the board divorced from all this isn't good for the board or the college, or leadership. You know, it it's gotta be a community thing where all the key constituencies, um, especially in a college where there's the self-governance, faculty and all these other issues. How to get the right involvement i- within each of the groups? It's it's not easy, but it's a good thought.
Key that that I picked up in your presentation had to do with the value of ongoing communication. And to me, that would mean just talking to people, and making sure that they understand that you understand. That, uh, and that we are serious and committed to making significant changes as they roll along. But again, the the role of the of the board member, you know, is traditionally one of making policy, not interfering, uh, perhaps encouraging, but not interfering with the process as developed by those who are responsible for the operational needs of the college.
Well, what ends up happening more often than not, it's happened at loads of kinds of organizations, is the board is brought in after the fact when something blows up. It's much better to be upfront, proactive, being, you know, you're not the managers of the organization. But it's in in selecting the right key people, and keeping an eye on things, the governance, the oversight. That's extremely important, and you can, the more you know, and that's, that's not filtered too much, and you have, you see things like this, how could you possibly do your job effectively if this was kept from you? You think things are very different. There were a number of comments in the survey, second guessing board decisions and actions. And just because of my experience, I looked at them, I don't know, cause I'm an outsider. I said, how many of these are really misperceptions? Because people don't know why you made a certain decision. Okay, that for legal, or for budgetary, or for who knows what reasons, you had to do certain things, people don't know, and then that's the communication issue.
We're about out of time, but trustee, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, uh, I just wanna thank you for coming, um, this report is very insightful. Um, my question is, you talked about having, um, equity trainings, and, um, some, we've heard that those trainings are kind of controversial from some board members. Would you, in your experience, say those are controversial, or they've helped improve the campus climate? From your experience.
Basically saying, does training help?
Yeah, those, um, equity trainings in particular.
It can help immensely, but it's not a cure-all by itself. If it's done real well, it sounds like the program you've got in place is probably pretty good. But there are ways to make it even better that we heard from people. So it's taking a look at it, getting everybody involved, getting more people into it, making sure, especially anybody who manages anybody, get in sooner rather than later. Let them use the material from the survey to talk, get dialogue going about these issues. So it it's, it's more real world with real data. It can help, but don't expect every last person to get value from the training. Some will hide and try not to go. There are people who said, I can't go, my, I'm too busy, my boss doesn't let me go. You gotta knock those barriers out of the way. But it can be extremely valuable, but again, some people won't get value from the training. They are who they are, and you gotta be mindful, and sometimes you just gotta deal with those people individually. Go offline and give them an opportunity, but not forever.
Howard, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. I'm rooting for you, take care.
I I see, I see it, you have a quick question?
I hope so, I hope it's quick.
We're out of time.
Well, thank you, well.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, you actually gave us, uh, some starting and ending points and filled in some gaps, like how do we do certain things? Um, my takeaway is, and this is to the board really here, I I think, you know, what what transpired over this last like year is, um, we had never, the board, in my time on the board, we never had any of these issues come before us. And, um, and we're, the board as a whole was pretty surprised. And, um, we reacted as fast as we could, and we said to the president, hey, get on it, do it. And, cause he reports to us, we hired him. And then we found out that he had some employees at, uh, at the high level, like at the VP level, that weren't getting things done. And we fixed an awful lot of things, we're in the process of fixing a whole bunch of other things. But what we don't have is what, um, our board president referred to as, is a policy that makes surveys and feedback like this on key issues happen regularly. And we have some, but we we sort of missed the boat on this. Um, we, we didn't ever seem to have problems with it, so nobody really set up anything to deal with it. The problems we had were normal, it hap- these difficulties happen everywhere. Um, we were just kind of immune to the major brunt of it at the school. So now we have to work on it, so I just wanna reinforce what our Robert Miller said about, um, you know, setting up a policy, and Jonathan's really good at helping to create policies. Maybe we can, maybe we could make some progress in that regard. And, um, I don't know that we can achieve all those, all all those goals, but I love the example that you gave us about, um, doing things that show that management and the board is interested. Yeah, walking around, whatever. Um, so we could do things that we know will have some kind of positive effect. But if we put, oh, I don't wanna, I'd hate to see the college put too much effort into things that are extremely difficult to do, and are, and the accomplishment, attainment of those goals is iffy. Because, cause we could end up doing nothing.
That's right. So sorting it, if I can in the last thirty seconds, sorting this through, what are the priorities that you see as a result of this? And I think our conversation before the meeting, there are a lot of things here that don't have to cost money. There are actions that can happen in communications and leadership, changing processes that don't cost, and they may save a lot of money.
Thank you very much, Howard.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hey, we, um, we now move to our second item on the, uh, on the agenda, the student equity plan?
Yeah, um, where am I going to, you're gonna be showing.
No, so I turned it on.
Thank you, everybody.
Name his phone number and his email.
All right, President Miller, President Benjamin, members of the board, thank you for having me. I will make this quick as possible, because you guys have this document in front of me, and hopefully had some chance to review it in your own leisure and on a larger screen with a little bit higher resolution. So, I'll go through this a little bit quick, and then hopefully have some time for comments, consideration, and all that. So, in fall twenty eighteen, the chancellor asks all of the community colleges to set a equity plan, to go forward and set an equity plan. Now, this isn't the first time that we've had to set an equity plan, they started back in around nineteen ninety-one. California started asking community colleges to set equity plans to start to remove disproportionate impact that was being viewed in various metrics. This particular one is unique in at least one major way in that the chancellor's office is using the information that we upload to their management information system, and then they're now analyzing that for us, so all of the colleges are doing the, are essentially being provided the exact same sort of analysis for their equity information. So the chancellor provided us information about where we had disproportionate impact on five metrics, and among several different student populations. So over the past semesters, the Student Equity Committee has been meeting together to formulate what are the goals that we should set for our equity plan, and how should we go forward about generally moving forward to achieve those goals? So, um, this is pretty much table of contents, real tiny apologies for that, uh, but gives you kind of a gist of what all we're looking at in this plan. So, to go forward with this, the Equity Committee convened, they also went out and said, okay, the chancellor has asked us to reduce our equity gaps by forty percent by twenty-one, twenty-two, and then by a hundred percent within ten years. So in this equity plan, we go forward and we took the student populations that the chancellor's office provided for us, and where we had disproportionate impacts, we set goals to remove, uh, reduce those disproportionate impacts by forty percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. So once we moved past kind of the goal-setting stage, then we moved into, how are we gonna go about achieving these goals? And what you'll see in this document is broad directions in which we want to pursue to try to remove some of these equity gaps and reduce disproportionate impact. So these don't go into a lot of detail, and that was somewhat intentional, and that as we move forward, we seize this, this plan as really developing a foundation for our work moving into this term and the next turns for how we wanna move forward with reducing disproportionate impact. So to do that, this first one really sets the goals, it sets a general framework of the activities that we're gonna pursue, but it doesn't get into the specifics for how we're gonna go pursuing that. And that's gonna what we're intending to start to develop as we move forward into this semester, into next semesters, is really, we've set these goals, we have a general idea of the activities that we are engaged in currently, and how we think that those will have an impact, but we still have some work to really kind of detail out how we think these activities are gonna carry out, how we're gonna go about evaluating if they have been successful and removing those disproportionate impacts, and some of that information. So that's gonna be kind of the work we have going forward, so what you have in front of you now is really this foundational document that is going to kind of set the framework for our next work to then figure out how to implement, fulfill, and develop this plan into identifying, okay, these are the specific activities that we are going to focus on to change this metric for this particular student population. So that's the general process the Student Equity Committee has kind of been following and proposes to pursue through the rest of this term and the rest of this equity plan. And, um, yeah, that is my very quick summary of this document.
What is our deadline?
Uh, this is the first read, I want to emphasize, you're just getting it tonight, you'll have, uh, two weeks to look over it. We sent it out today through the constituency leaders, they're gonna have it, uh, reviewed by everybody at the college whom they represent. And then they'll come back to us on October first with feedback. And then we'll be with you again, this will be on your agenda for the second read and approval in the October twelve meeting. And we got an extension, State Chancellor's Office, it's due in Sacramento on the fifteenth of October.
Yes. Trustee, how are you?
Uh, given the short amount of time that we have left today, I'm wondering if there is a mechanism where we can submit more detailed comments?
Absolutely, just send them to me, and I'll make sure the committee gets them. And if you have any questions you want us to answer in the meeting, get those in advance, that'd be good as well, because we have to have it there on the fifteenth, and we'll still have three days after the board meeting to make some change.
Trustee, Nelson?
Yeah, um, there were, without going into great detail, cause we don't have enough time really, um, the definitions of, at the top of the columns of what we're looking at. If, um, at least for people that aren't involved in the education world, I am now, but I wasn't. If there was alternative titles for those columns, um, it would help me understand all of it. it would help me understand all of it better. I I need more time to read it. I didn't get to see it to when you put it, when it got posted.
Kind of the definitions of the metrics like uh
Yeah.
access, yeah, so.
Yeah, and what you're gonna do, what what am I actually looking at here is, we're looking at the target.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe where we're at now, but I
Okay.
what you're doing.
Let me let me make a suggestion. Do you want us to just have some time with you? We can do it over the phone with you.
Yeah, that would be fun.
We could.
I I need a little guidance to make sure I'm not solid on exactly. I noticed there's a lot of under each section, there was a repetitive language.
Yeah.
And so and that's to be expected. Um so uh going through it and looking at it, I thought the goals were pretty high.
That's what the chancellor's asked.
They're really high, but what and then in some cases, we're already there. I I thought we're really close.
So in all of the groups that are appear in there, we do have disproportionate impact. Now things, uh some of the goals ha- show a very, you know, five hundred percent change and that's because we are dealing with a small population. They're asked, you know, we're getting five hundred percent change and that's saying, you know, rather than one student doing this, we're hoping to get six students to do this. And that would be what would it, that's how many it would take to reduce that disproportionate impact by forty percent.
That's kind of feeling I was getting, so I couldn't really tell, I didn't get a good feel for um you know, the magnitude of what needed to be done for each one of the issues.
Yeah.
And the different groups, I was really having a hard time putting that together in my head.
Yeah, and this is something that was really prescribed to us by the chancellor's office.
Yeah.
Um they've had, uh it's been an interesting rollout from their side in this process. So we're expecting when they come back around to this in another time that we're gonna have a much smoother rollout and, you know, some of these metrics will be a little bit clearer to kind of work through. So some of that difficulty was kind of prescribed to us.
We'll we'll set up a meeting, uh trustee Nielsen.
Okay.
So.
Anyway, you want in person or over the phone, so we can walk through it with you.
A meeting on the phone would probably work okay.
Okay.
You know, I don't, whatever's easy.
Okay.
Whatever works for you.
So great, to your point, so that was mine and I can maybe you want to comment, I join him and you may join.
You wanna be on anybody else?
So we spent five point five million dollars on equity in the last four years. And so I think attaching that dollar to these metrics and what has been done to assess these programs, have we increased and or do we just do something and then scratch it and then spend another one point five million, scratch it? So I think that that money piece is really tied to that data, so if you guys can put that data together and really show the correlation between the money and the outcomes.
This year is four point five million, right, for us?
A loan in one year, so we even created like ten million in four years.
In one year. I don't know what was before.
Oh, I'm looking at I'm looking at appendix B in um student equity expenses.
Right. So the dollars used to be three separate pots of resources from the state and equity dollars were their own standalone pot. In the midst of some of the changes, and you learned about this when you talked to you about the vision for student success.
Right.
Those dollars were coalesced together, so we took what used to be matriculation dollars and then they were called student support and success program dollars.
Okay.
And then the basic skills initiative dollars, the innovation grant from the chancellor's office, ten years of that funding. And then equity dollars, which had not been prescribed standalone dollars for a period of time and then were. It combined all of those resources. So when you talk about that larger part, that larger part is four point five million dollars. Um but we can talk about what our past history looks like on the very specific equity dollars. They don't, they're not pulled apart the same way going forward into the future. Because that's a little bit that same concept of the chancellor's office keeps reiterating to us. Equity is throughout all of the work that we do, it's in guided pathways. Everything is together. If we're gonna move the whole system forward, we have to make all of these great big changes. So they they collapse those dollars and then they created that student center funding formula that reinforces a lot of those same outcomes. So pushing all of that through, so when Z says he helps the next set of rollouts from the state look a little smoother and a little less bumpy, they're trying to get to this same set of metrics that we can look across all of these different resources. Because right now we still shift and move slightly um across these figures. And so part of what we'll be working on the end of remainder of the semester is a much more integrated approach to increasing the student success.
Then maybe can, I mean, I don't know if you'll have time, it seems like it'll take Lindsay's office too, um but can we get it sort of in a char something so that the dollars are very clear? And you may not have the data for some of these other initiatives, cause it sounds like you're going forward in a more systematic cohesive coherent way.
Yes, we can include that in the next.
But I feel like that dollar amount is gonna be important to attach to some of these metrics and just get a big picture, which I see what you're saying. And I think that's gonna be important for the larger community.
It'll it's a major shift on the way that we've done business and so we'll try to put together what we have
Yeah.
to this day and this is part of it, we'll be doing more forward, so it'll be much clearer as we go forward and this work.
Thank you, Director.
Trustee uh Corinna.
Quick uh suggestion and that is that, and I may have missed it, but I I looked, um define equity in the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, um so most of the discussion around that is how they calculate disproportionate impact.
No, 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 I mean, when you write the plan, have a definition of equity.
Include the definition.
You know, the definition of equity in the plan.
Like the.
So you have a.
Yes. Yeah, it's it's operationalized as the uh disproportionate impact, but yes, that narrative can be cleared.
We just looked at a definition of equity in our report, previous report just now, I'm just saying we should have a definition.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
And what I what I want us to do is come up with common kind of col- college definitions for equity, diversity, climate, all those things. He gave us some samples up there today, but we all need to mean the same thing when we use those words and I don't think that's the case right now.
Amen.
In our crossroads training, there's a definition that we have there, but we need a common definition, so we need to figure out how we're gonna get to that. And then there may be a different definition that the state chancellor has for it. Sounds like.
Magic needs to begin.
Any any more questions, trustee Nielsen?
I read something just recently, yesterday or today, um again, um talking about uh achieving better outcomes, student throughput, getting things done that that like um something like over forty percent of things that are done fail or don't show any results. And so I would hope that our management, our top administration is really looking at, you know, if we're gonna spend money on this, let's put it where into programs and ideas and things that have showed some positive results. It it's it's okay to experiment, but not with the bulk of the budget. Just an opinion of a board member, thank you.
How do you have that in his research, uh his meta-analysis for K twelve, the effect size? Do they have that for higher ed?
I I'm not aware of it, I'm sure it's.
I'll look.
Any other comments or questions?
Research that.
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, very good. Sorry to uh.
If she lets me go, I'm sorry.
Yes.
On the phone.
Yeah, we'll set, Angela set it up.
Sorry to uh cut you short, but you did an outstanding job.
We'll make sure there's more time next.
Not only that, he could talk real fast.
Do I hear a uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We do.
By virtue of the original motion.
Yes.
Okay, well, we got a minute left yet, so you you can't leave. Thank you, President Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.